So uh in that case, it's seven oh two. I'd like to call this meeting to order just uh to be respectful of everyone's time. So I will start by taking attendance, Greg McIntosh. Julie Smith Galvin. Robin Greenberg. And Aaron Kokinda. So first order of business, if people can see my screen is the approval of the meeting minutes from our September nineteenth. Twenty twenty-three meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes?
Um, so I moved to I moved to approve the minutes of September nineteenth to in twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, uh Counselor Smith Galvin. Do I have a second? Okay, uh motion on the floors to accept the meeting minutes from the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three working group meeting. All in favor, uh I'll start with for a roll call vote, Greg McIntosh. Julie Smith Galvin. Robin Greenberg. Aaron Kokinda. Okay, uh motion passes five to zero with Matt Lowry and Matt Bowen not being a present to vote one way or the other. Okay, so in that case, I'd like to uh get into the balance of the working group discussion. Uh for today's meeting, from a uh timeline perspective, the really the the items that. Aaron and I have been working on are trying to firm up the. Presentation that we're anticipating on utilizing as we go through the public engagement process with everyone. So. I don't know if we necessarily need to review the maps and we haven't moved the bylaw uh development in the since the time that we met together. So. What I'd like to do, I'd like to skip to reviewing the PowerPoint presentation and then talk about some of the upcoming calendar items. And communication strategies based on how far we get or don't with that presentation. So with that being said, uh I'm gonna pull up the presentation. So for everyone's uh reference, this is mid similar, but uh with a number of different elements that have been. Recombined formatted to be more presentable. Items take it a lot of items taken to the appendix in order to try to create a I'll call a cleaner narrative. Uh in order to allow to be able to go through it and the presentation setting and then have a bunch of information in the appendix. That we can kind of run through. So I think this is pretty close to being able to be ready to to, you know, for prime time, but. I want to run through obviously with this group in order to get feedback if that's not the case and then to start making some of the adjustments that we need to. So if you guys don't mind, what I'd like to do, I'd like to do a a quick sprint through the presentation and then we can circle back similar to what we did the last time. Anyone have any objections to that?
Uh I'll just note that I did start looking and I have some silly fussy like notes on how it's formatted like. Situation and stuff, so I'm not gonna say them here. I'm actually. Um thought I'd go through the PowerPoint and it won't let me track changes, but apparently if you take two versions, you can compare them. So you could see my suggested. Edits on things that I think that's a better use in folks' time and then. Me suggesting, you know, this line that does that work okay for you, Jim?
Greatly appreciated that workflow instead of trying to do edit by six people all at once.
Yeah, it would be painful, I think.
Absolutely. So in that case, what I'll do is I'll dive into this. So conceptually, what I wanted to do is just have a a slide here. That just has a high level overview of the proposed summary of some of the background and some of the end results. So just kind of go through Massachusetts has a high and fast growing housing costs due to estimated housing shortages of two hundred thousand units. In twenty twenty, the state passed a law requiring that Wakefield establish a multifamily zoning district that allows multifamily housing as a right. Failure to establish a multifamily zoning district results in out Wakefield becoming ineligible for number of grants. We have a proposed multifamily district that will be centered around the Wakefield Junction commuter rail station. The proposed district will comply with all state requirements and maintain eligibility for those grants. Proposed district from a physical perspective keeps as a right developments to three-story maximum. Then this and this is honestly, this slide and a couple of these next ones are where I'd love some feedback from the group. They're very text heavy, which is not. Necessarily what I want, but as you all know, there's so much information, you can go down the rabbit hole pretty quickly. So there's a no number of elements in this slide regarding the background. The zoning act, a lot of this is language that we've just lifted from previous slides. Maybe a little redundant with some of the summary slides, but we can kind of fall back on that. Go into elements of what if we don't comply with it, identifying the three programs that. Wakefields receive three point six million dollars, which were the initial programs that they state announced if you were noncompliance, you'd be ineligible for. This list of fourteen additional programs that recent March. The state added to that list that you wouldn't be eligible for and then kind of denoting that the Attorney General threatened legal action against noncomplying communities. That's kind of nebulous what that actually means, but something that I think is relevant for background. Move in the presentation and just start talking about what is the requirements. All the things that we've talked about before, fifteen units an acre, the sixteen ninety-six requirement for the unit capacity. Minimum sizes, where it's located. Talk about Wakefield zoning today. We don't have any districts where multifamily for three plus units are as a right. Two thirds of the land is for a single family. There are places where you have two two family homes as of right. And then kind of talking about where those are located with the town. This slide represents a kind of a description of what's the Wakefield existing housing stock look like, sixty percent single family. Ten percent for large multifamily and then the balance, you know, between two and smaller type of multifamily units. How's the housing market? You know, Wakefield has a uh what's considered a tight housing market. With a vacancy and, you know, sub four percent, healthy markets are typically between five and eight. You know, and so that typ- it typically indicates that we have a tight housing market with challenges in housing turnover and. Associated cost increases due to how low the supply is. Sixty percent of Wakefield houses approximately have one or two people, but only forty percent. Approximately have two bedrooms or less. So there may be a slight mismatch in terms of the number of people in each household and the number of bedrooms. Then that would lead into, okay, so what is the district that's being proposed? You can see on the map, these blue districts represent the district that the working group has uh is is setting forth. The you can see Wakefield Junction is located basically in the center of the map. A number of bus stops are located along north and main. That was one of the main reasons why. We advocated for citing the multifamily district as currently constituted. Go into this is, and this is where again, I'd love feedback from the rest of the group. This is a map that shows the existing zoning of the town. With these dashed blue lines represent the proposed zoning district kind of overlaid the existing zoning just to kind of get a sense. You can see in this slide, there's a lot of overlap with our business district. And some of our general residents where two families are already allowed as of right. As well as um it's it directly abuts our, you know, downtown business. For the lo- locations that aren't directly in the downtown business area right now. Then we talk about proposed mul- the proposed multifamily district. As of right number of units, obviously for this multifamily district, four. Are we wanted to highlight the existing mixed-use zoning, the garden apartment specifically, because that's not more akin than. The mid-rise that we have for the special permit. None of those units are as a right because a special permit is required. But you can see minimum lot size, building height, maximum stories. Minimum open space and parking spaces are all materially consistent. I know Aaron wanted to circle up as soon as the parking spaces that one and a half. Spaces per unit, and I think that's probably, this is probably be a slide we could probably highlight as something that we wanted to have a further conversation with. The public regarding that specific item, but this is kind of outlining in terms of the other dimensional characteristics. It's consistent with the existing. Mixed-use zoning, which is by special permit. Going into what is that, what is the developments that we would envision that this would allow as a right look like from a development context? Home in Plu- on Pleasant Street, four units on about a fifty-six hundred square foot lot. Richardson Ave, four on a forty-three hundred square foot lot. Wakefield Ave, another three unit, fifty-six, Avon Street, a four unit over six thousand.
Good question um for the this line and the previous one. All of these examples are ones that would comply with the standards we're presenting, right? Or they're just examples of what multifamily looks like here?
So it honestly, the I I am not sure one way or the other, if they would comply with the thirty percent or not. They're just examples of what the the bill form looks like. But it's a good question, maybe something that we we could track down.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I I kind of wonder if we need to say, give examples of saying so. Cause the next one's an example of development that does comply. So I think we need to know if these would have complied too, cause then we could do like check, you know, this could be repeated successfully.
Yeah, it it it's a fair point. Honestly, I just don't have that data one way or the other to be able to run those numbers, but we can see if we can track that up. That's it's a really good point, though. And then the next slide would go into. We envision that developments such as this one that was completed in the near past twenty twenty-two, which was four units on a. Roughly seven thousand square foot lot. This is the type of development we would anticipate. Would become easier to execute under this proposed zoning. Again, not a guarantee that that would trigger that, but this is the type of unit that we would envision would be as of right in lieu of the current. Bylaws which require special permits. This one is a little bit atypical and Greg can. Can provide additional context as it relates to, it would have been with the exception of one minor element as it relates to, I believe you said is the bay windows.
I think that's right. I'd have to look back at um. At the records, but I think it was, and it was a little bit different too, and then I think that it was existing nonconforming to a certain extent, so. But yeah, you're right. I I I'll I'll actually before any, you know, public outreach dig back and actually read that decision too, so.
The only other thing is that it was existing nonconforming, that that's a little slightly different too, right? Because. It's existing nonconforming is, cause they're you, it wasn't a four unit as of right. It was existing nonconforming, so they would have needed a special permit if it had only been two.
Hey Jim, are we sure it's four? I thought it was three.
I thought it was three also.
It's three.
It's three? I thought it was a four unit, cause I thought there's two units on the first floor and then one on the second and one on the third.
No, I think one of those doors in the front may go upstairs to one of the. Spaces. I'm almost positive it's three. I can find the decision.
Alright, Google only list brought units one through three when they went for sale.
Yeah, we we should just circle up and make sure we understand that and I'll take the the eighteen units per acre off be- based on that as well.
I have the plans up. I'll look at them and then let you know.
Okay.
I don't have the decision though. I try not to keep extraneous, but I do have the plans, so for some reason.
Uh this is then my intent would be to go to the next slide. This is the one that I think needs the most work and I would love to get some feedback from. Um some of the folks as well, you know, information that is or is not useful to include for I'll call it development context. I have a map showing where some of the it those ex- examples are in relation to the proposed multifamily overlay district. Um there's some information that I think we I want to kind of talk with everyone in terms of what makes sense to include or not include. Average number of permits uh or units permitted in Wakefield, the lots sold per year. Total properties, the average size of a square of square footage of the lot of the um of a lot within Wakefield. You know, maybe we can talk about if it makes sense to have estimated possible new housing units, you know, what we actually think would potentially. Um be delivered. Lexington has something similar to that, but I'm not sure if that makes sense unless you're. Exceptionally transparent in terms of the number of your assumptions, so I want to circle back to that, that line of thinking. Then the next one would be. You know, that would be the district that we are proposing. There's a district where if you wanted to just have strict minimum to comply with the state mandate. This compliance map is reflective of that. Aaron, I think I'm noticing, I know that you added the the sixteen thirty-five final unit capacity.
Yeah, it's missing. No, it's not right. I just was, I picked up on that. It's just missing the Gould Street properties here right around the park. And once I add that. It should be right above what the minimum is.
Yeah, cause the minimum is sixteen ninety-six, I recall, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can we just pick pick up that number and then we can update that on the fly?
Uh I'll try my best. Trying to do minute. Yeah, okay.
Do you do you really want to have that slide available? Now, it's good to have that, but. Feature it? You really want to do that? Or do you want to wait until someone says, well, what if, what if we wanted the minimum? I I I don't want people to just default, so let's just go for the minimum. You already have it ready to go. So I don't know how other people feel about that, but but I I know there's gonna be a certain amount of people that just wanna jump like that anyways. Not even look at anything. So do you want to kind of like bury the lead a little bit and wait till it it? And uh asked for?
It it's a fair question and I I I don't, I could definitely see us going that way. Um before we circle, can I just like to just finish going through this and maybe we circle right back to that question? The next items I had on here, just to kind of close out the presentation is kind of the. The implementation schedule with a number with the all the different uh presentations that we're proposing on. Presenting that we know about between now and call it the end of the year and then talk about. Spring twenty-four revise, you know, incorporate feedback, spring twenty-four town meeting vote anticipated. So people have an understanding of the process and then kind of a high level summary, district's gonna be in full compliance with the state law. It helps Auburn Wakefield to uh. Or it's an opportunity for Wakefield to help address the regional and Wakefield specific housing crisis. Zoning that rate helps regulate, review and guide growth, increasing the housing options for Wakefield residents. And then maintains Wakefield's eligibility for state grants and provides a competitive advantage for all other state grants. And then we go right into questions and answers and then we can have kind of a note for, you know, the the items that we have additional slides. On following topics if people want to get into into it, you know, additional backup in the appendix. And then in the appendix, we included and I'll just flip through, you know, citing other citing places. Greenwood as an as an alternate that we explored, didn't think it was relevant in the presentation, cause we're not pursuing that option. Outreach efforts, we'll continue to update this as we actually, you know, more meetings are added to the list. You know, working group, you know, who are the members, what is the process that we went through to go through this? This is something that I got circled with Aaron. Lexington had an equivalent version where they actually had all the relevant key metrics. Of the demonstrating compliance with the state's requirements. So but would want to update this for to obviously for Wakefield. And then some information as it relates to the school enrollment numbers, so to anticipate that question. And then we have the slide in here, which we may or may not need to uh make more specific for Wakefield as it relates to what a site plan approval is versus special permit. I have this more as a placeholder, but that's kind of the the crux and the meat of the presentation and the backup. So. With that being said, I'd like to switch back, uh you know, I think Matt, I think I heard. You brought up a really good question as it relates to this minimum compliance map. And I'd love to open it up to other members of the working group to get your solicit your feedback as it relates to that question, whether or not that wants to be in the appendix.
So I guess my question to that would be then, I understand what Matt's saying, but. In the name of transparency, if people who aren't as in-depth in this, how are they gonna know? That what we are proposing is not, how would they even know to ask the question? I guess is the best way to put it. How, what? What information would they have other than essentially this slide? And maybe it's a different format. But what information would they have to even ask, hey? You know, you're proposing X, you know, wha- what is the lowest we can go from there? Uh i- if I think a lot of people will probably just assume we're just trying to get uh to mere compliance.
I I think we should make it a point to say that we're. Actively trying to pull the downtown forward into this and not just keep it centered around.
So tell the story rather than say, here's what the minimum is. Say, here's what we're doing and here's why.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We need to sell it that. We we're trying to make not only, you know, we're only trying to comply with. With what's required, but we want to enhance downtown by bringing some vibrant to down here by at the same. So more more people to walk around. And if people, at that point, if people say, well, uh I don't really care about that. I just want to, you know, leave whatever the state wants. Then we can say, okay, well then, this is what it would look like. And then we need to be prepared to say. Why this is the best? Why? Why would you want to center everyone around? A train station that's dead most of the time, which you want to send them around the vibrant street down.
I wonder whether there's kind of a middle way. I agree with both sides of this. The slide before Jim. So where we're kind of making the case, right? And maybe maybe there's a couple of slides like this. I mean, I think at some point you can kind of put the dotted line around this slide. As what the minimum is and we'll show what's kind of outside, but then you can talk about why we're doing things outside that circle. So I think rather than a whole separate slide, something that kind of just overlays what the minimum is in what we've done, what we've done and why we didn't. Restrict everything to within that circle.
So just just put the radio around the station.
Yeah, around this, put it around this.
Yeah, we're we're grabbing, you know, we want to shift the the center of this focus from the station to more the center of.
Right, right. I think that's how I would address it. And then we can have the, we can have the other slide in the appendix, so people can see it kind of without, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's that's a good good approach. So again, we're not, you know, we're not hiding the fact, we're just. It's actually displaying more why we're pushing it a little bit further east to include.
And and I and I think, you know, I think we may, it's it's gonna get busy, I realize, but I like the one that has where the bus stops are and where the. You know, kind of where the transportation infrastructure is as well, cause I think it makes a lot of sense in our telling of the story.
Yeah, I think ca- so candidly, it's a if it was a timeline thing, I think what I would do from hearing this feedback is take. This map with all the other uh legend and items and overlay um the. Development context. In you know, all of this, this, you know, use some of I'll call it blue beam magic. Uh which was, this was done on a prior version of the actual overlay. So I update this map to add that information. And then I think what I'm hearing, which makes a lot of sense would. Take some of these bullet points in terms of why a larger district was being proposed, kind of. Copy paste this map and kind of frame this slide as a why this, we think this is a good thing. Update this map to reflect the full zone, have like kind of an outline saying that this is, you know, what we need for the minimum. Also showing the two additional zones and then take the, you know, kind of a minimum compliance map. Send to the appendix for, you know, so someone could actually just pull up the the minimum itself.
Right, and you may be able to stack them so they kind of build on each other or subtract, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I can I can play around with that.
And then the the other slide I I made question a little bit is the one with all the data.
You're talking about this slide, Matt, just for clarity?
Is it that one or? The number of units, but you know, you're talking about the number of units, the number of permits, all that thing. That's good for certain people that like numbers, others are just, with your, you know, rising male back in the head, they start hearing all that, so.
I'm sorry, sorry, you're talking about the one where we're talk, you're talking about like what the existing housing stock looks like?
Yes, yeah. I I think it's somewhat useful, but I I wouldn't want to focus on it too much because. Certain people are gonna wanna see that, but I don't think they're gonna make the correlation of why you need to have it in its own. You know, they're seeing all these numbers anyways.
So I guess the question I would have is, is your thought that that something like this would be another one where it'd be good to put in the appendix and then? Kind of if people want to dive into what are, what is the existing housing stock in Wakefield look like? We have something that is a backup, but. Not kind of highlight that characteristic, right? You know, it as part of the base presentation.
Yeah, or, you know, make it a, you know, a quick start, you know, well, it was pretty quickly even moved on. I wouldn't focus too heavily on on this. And strictly numbers. I I think people like, you know, pictures better than looking at too much data.
Yeah, and I think it. I think both Jim and Matt also know that too, the more numbers you put, the more people will say. Well, no matter what it says, you and I both know that X, so. Like, for instance, I could see some, we like, we have the vacancy rate right there, Jim, and I think that's a great number, but people will say, you know, and I think I've heard it. On some of the things in the ZBA that they'll say, well, yeah, okay, that's what it says and that's what you're telling me, but you and I both know that this development is. Empty, which likely isn't true, but um it just provides. Um I mean, I I think the numbers are great. I'm sort of a numbers person, but I think it provides an area where unless you. You know, put in the source of all the numbers, which I don't think we're gonna do um. I- in every slide, then it's it's an area that people will just yet again a- attack.
Yeah, they'll they'll just focus and pick it apart instead. You know, being it is a plus, you know, they'll use it as a uh. A negative and something.
So along that line, Jim, if it is moved to the appendix, are we gonna put in or maybe some sort of, not a full citation, obviously. I don't think we need a legal citation in there, but. Basically showing where we get for when people do sort of attack it, where these numbers came from. So we can point right to it and not say, not just say, well, we got them from.
Yeah, I think Aaron and I, Aaron made a comment about about some of that and trying to add some of that back flavor in terms of where some of those numbers came from. So I think that's one of the things that we have as a as an open to do.
I don't think it needs to be anything crazy.
No, for for reference, for for the everyone on this call is reference that a lot of these numbers came from. Aaron, can you, can you clarify? I think it was, most of these are the Mass Housing Partnership?
Yeah, so those numbers, the bedrooms, people in the house, that came from the Mass Housing Partnership. Um the overall total housing unit that census figures um that's highlighted in one of the other slides um. This other stuff could be from Vision twenty thirty or from the master plan data that we've pulled together already. Um which is again census data that this will, so it's all from this, a lot of it is from the census.
Yeah, Aaron, this this housing market, all this information is from that same slide that this. So we can, we can add that. So I think it probably makes sense if we move this to the appendix, then we can. It's useful context, but to your point, if we could probably take a lot of these, a lot of the this data and describe it verbally. If we're talking, you know, during the, what does the Wakefield zoning look like? And you can talk about, you know, what this, what is all, what is all those? Metrics look like.
And and I think if we have a resource page online or something, or maybe even can cut like a thirty-second video into it, the the housing um. Seminar Aaron that Aaron that we did a while back, where people kind of told their own stories, that's really compelling. So I I think we should drive people to to listen to some of those stories, you know, people of all different, you know, backgrounds, time in town. Well, how they can't find housing.
Yep. Yeah, and there's some good data on there, the PowerPoint's there as well.
There is, that that was an excellent of um seminar and we should make sure that it's out there for people to reference.
You're talking, it was like the, it was the mass housing, it was like the housing summit, like like a couple of years back. Aaron, does, if I if I send send the note to Jen, does she know where to grab that video, like where it lives?
I thought I sent that to you already, did I not? Um I could send it to you, but I know where exactly where it is.
Okay, but if we send something to Jen saying, hey, can you please add that resource to the ARC webpage that there's, it's it's clear where it lives? Okay, uh so then, so I think that's all great feedback. To be candid, one of the other things I wanted to kind of get people's feedback on, cause I I felt. Putting the presentation together, probably too text-heavy on the front end. You know, the to to Greg's, I think Greg's earlier point, and maybe Julie said this too, having, you know, all this wall of. Information is a lot to take in. You know, I think that there's probably some value in having, you know, kind of a overall summary where you kind of walk through bullet point wise. But when I started going through the background and you're into a second. But when I started going through the background and you're into a second wall of bullet points, it feels like it may be. Kind of uh tough and somewhat redundant on some of these things. So I, I don't know, I, 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 the people have looked at this and they had any feedback as it relates to how to make this more readable, but. I was thinking that maybe some of this information's redundant and could come out to try to help clarify.
I think there's, it's a little redundant, that's actually some of the edits you'll see from me, but um if the audience. Is folks that are not in person and they're gonna maybe look at this package offline, I think you need to have all the words. You couldn't use this at town meeting because you can't read it, cuz you're just too far away from the screen, so if this is meant to be the prep. For town meeting, I, I think it's okay because this gets circulated outside of a meeting presentation. Cuz in, in presentations, you need stuff that's a little more engaging, but if it's meant to be like a handout and resources, I think it's okay.
So I have a question about, to, to people. Do you think, do you think people even care about the, the background of the law? We have to do it. We say what the proposed multifamily district summary is in the previous slide. This could be an appendix too, if people are saying, well, why did the state do this? Cuz wh- what we're trying to do is essentially comply with the state, right? Well, if someone then wants to say, well, why did the state legislature do what they did, then it could be in the, in the appendix. At least in my view, what we're trying to do is comply with state law. Um, I, I don't think we need to necessarily get right into the background of why another legislative body did something. Just my view, I don't know if anyone.
Yeah, I think, I think I agree. Uh, I, I do wonder though whether in lieu of something like this, on addition. We might need something like basic glossary terms, like as of right, I'm not sure if I've said it on all these meetings, I wouldn't even know what as of right means. You know, I mean, we're pretty deep in it, but we should really think about bringing the language or at least having a quick glossary that level sets.
Sorry, I'm just pausing cuz that's a really good point. I'm just, like in my head, I'm thinking of like, what would be the other things besides as of right? That you'd wanna go.
Yeah, maybe we can, we can think about that. And some of them you might be able to make some graphics to, you know, to, the, so it doesn't have to be so text heavy. You know, like, as of right, like, you know, no going for special permits, but people don't even, you know, people don't understand the ZBA is. Um, you know, only when you need a variance, cuz it feels like everybody needs a variance, so there's some, where, you know, I think there's some. Level setting around that kind of stuff.
So your slide actually twenty seven starts to get there, and I'm wondering what you really need is the. Instead of it just being site plan versus special permit, is that you start at the beginning, say, I have a project. Can I do it by right or not by right? And so I have two different columns or rows depending on which orientation, and then it goes. By right, and then you do underneath and it goes permit issued, not by right, now you have to go by site plan, you know, to give a little bit of. So any project you have to ask the question by right, not by right, and then, and then what happens? Would be my suggestion, and then so it's kind of the, the before this info. Does that make sense?
I think that works, yeah.
You almost do like a, uh, uh, the summary, so. And I'm just gonna take this slide twenty six just as a placeholder, right? But if you did from a structure perspective, you're saying. You know, you go propose multifamily district summary, that slide. That we just talked, or you know, had for the um, for the site plan or a special permit. And then you immediately omit the uh background. And then you omit the background, and then after that, then you go right into, you know, what if we don't comply?
And we might wanna flip that, what if we don't comply, like, and I must, I, I don't love negative headlines like that, there must be a more positive way, you know. Complying allows us to continue to access blah, 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 blah. You know, millions of dollars basically in funding. Something like that.
Okay.
But kind of going back to the glossary and the, I really, I really like that because I think. I think this is a telling a story and, you know, here's a lot and you wanna build this and, you know. I, I think we can make it a little more of a narrative than a bullets, at least when we're talking about it.
So, conceptually, right, you'd go district summary, impact on grants. Some sort of like flow chart slash glossary. Then you go right into the actual requirements. I think that makes, I think that probably flows better, and it, you know, makes so, you kind of, you know, theoretically. The site plan of, you know, this chart slash glossary is probably gonna be a lot more um graphics heavy and less text heavy. More conducive to actually engaging. Someone. And then we go into the rest of the, rest of the presentation in terms of what the actual requirements are. Wakefield zoning, et cetera, et cetera. Um, any other, any other ones that people wanted to highlight as, as we were going through here, or, you know, other. Fundamental questions or concerns as it relates to how we're putting this presentation together?
Nothing of that substance to add, Jim, but just back to that chess match read, it is a three unit, I just pulled up the plans. And then I lost him again, I don't know where, it's like a twelve hundred, a seventeen hundred and a fifteen hundred square foot unit.
Okay.
Hold them up, and now I lost them.
No worries, it enough, enough, yeah, you got enough information to.
Yeah, yeah.
Give us what we need, uh, okay. This is actually duplicate, this one, go to the appendix. Bear with me for a second, I'm just trying to. This would be. So just, if you bear with me for a second, so just to kind of take it from the top, you know, with kind of all the, the slides that we just changed around. We go into the summary, we talk about the grants impact, we talk about site, you know, the, the glossary slash the flow chart. Go into the requirements of the district, Wakefield zoning today. The actual proposed multi-family zoning district, the existing zoning within the proposed district. The dimensional requirements of the proposed district and the existing mixed use zoning within the zoning. As currently constituted. What is the existing multifamily in Wakefield look like? Existing development in the recent past. Some, the, you know, the context will update this map. Positive impacts of the districts, you know, why we're, uh, why we're proposing on, or what we think that the, the, the. Elements that there will be helpful for the community as a result of this district, the schedule. Summary, and then we go right into questions and answers, and we have all the other. Uh, other backup information that we can pull up as people start asking questions about this. Does that feel conceptually like it flows and everyone, like, it honestly, it's shorter than we originally had, which I like because I think it probably. Talking at, at people for long lengths of time on this topic, I feel like it's not, is conducive to people kind of tuning out.
Yeah, I agree, people are gonna have their questions no matter what we say in that, those first few slides anyway, so. I think it's good to get the top level info out and then get right into the questions.
I agree that people are gonna ask questions that you will have already said cuz they're so focused on. Coming into preconceived notions that you're gonna have to repeat. I think also that because this is going to. A small group first, like the town council, there'll be a good sounding board to kind of get a sense of. You know, this gets amended based on, you know, what we see, you know, they, you know, based on their feedback, you may learn that, you, we do need to. Readdress it or something like that, so. I think it does a great job, thanks, Jim.
Okay, um, so, oh, actually, uh, Matt, Aaron, eh, do you guys have any other? High level comments on, on those types of things?
No, it's good.
Yeah, I, I think this is a good, um. A good line for the presentation, but then, yeah, people are gonna come. Either wanting to ask a question or make a statement, so you're getting them ready to, to do that. Um, I do think one thing we need to be consistent on is. Is calling this Wakefield Station, not Wakefield Junction, because of the. The people that have been in Wakefield long enough know the difference between Wakefield Station and where Wakefield Junction is. Um, I, I think that's just gonna bring a little bit of uh. Impair to people that if, if it's not called the property, so.
That's an excellent point.
I agree, Matt, yeah.
Jim, on slide thirteen, I thought you said you wanted to discuss some things that I think were kind of below the.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yep, um, so a- absolutely, this is the, the next thing I wanted to circle back to, so. Uh, Aaron and I are trying to put together a, a handful of kind of, I'll call it context as it relates to development in the town. So I know that Aaron had pulled together kind of the average numbers of per, units that have been permitted from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one. We had some questions whether or not that made sense because most of the units from a volume of units are concentrated in, you know. A handful of projects that everyone could probably guess what they are, you know, is it, is that a useful data point? Some of the other, uh, you know, things that we have in here as it relates to the total properties according to our census data. We got eleven hundred and two sixty one, you know, the median or, or average lot size for all lots is twenty thousand. It's thirteen for single family, two family, you know, et cetera. And then there's some other metrics that we talked about potentially adding as it relates to the percentage of that this district represents of town land. And or, you know, it doesn't make sense to be comparing the total of prop, properties in Wakefield with how many are covered by this uh. By this district, and then we had, you know, the estimated possible new housing units, based on the five districts is. You know, if everything in the district and all these districts was completely leveled and then restarted. You could theoretically have two thousand three hundred and fifty five housing units, but that's obviously not a net estimated new housing units. So does it make sense to try to, you know, based on the number of lots sold over the last X number of years? Times, you know, the, the, you know. Assuming some amount of turnover to have like an estimated possible new housing units, or do you think that we're just setting ourselves up for people to freak out because? You know, we're taking guesses at things that are unknow, unknowable because real estate's not a science.
So that two, three, five, five is not net, that would be. That would be every single one of those units turning over and becoming four family unit or four units.
Sorry, repeat that again, Julie, sorry, and just for hands.
So the estimated possible new housing units would be. If every single one of those lots sold and became, and was, was then rebuilt by right as four units.
Correct, with, that fits within all the different parameters that we put in, that is the max about. The possible number, max number of units, sorry, that was um.
So what's our, I'm sorry if I missed it, so what's our starting, like how many housing units are in these five districts right now?
Um, within those five, I think, um, I wrote that number down today, um. I had it down somewhere on one note.
Yeah, it's, it's fine, I mean, I guess, I guess like what I'm saying is like, I think there's probably.
Oh, well, in those districts, I don't know, but I could find out pretty easily. Um, total housing units that we have currently is eleven thousand two hundred and fifty one in town, but I don't know for those districts. Each one broken down, but I could easily find that out tomorrow.
That might be a lot more interesting, cuz part of me kind of thinks, oh, twenty three hundred housing units. Is not a lot, when you figure, I don't know how many is already there, but the net is probably well under that.
Yeah, and, and having that answer to, to, to just put out there in, in this spell. Perhaps some rumors that are gonna start, it, it's better to have, well, right now there are, say, twelve hundred units there, so. You know, you, you're not, there's no way you're gonna see this many new housing units.
Right, and based on average sales, you know, maybe five percent turnover a year, right? So, so to get to that net. Whatever it is, to call it thousand extra units, might take you fifty years.
Yeah, but I could see this, this number being, you know, the lead headline and. Making someone's Facebook posts of, you know, this is how many new housing units we're gonna have next year, so. And so people take a number, they repost it, and then it takes on a life of its own, so if you can. We have that number, we'll put it in the context to say, yes, that's if. But most likely it would never get to that point.
I'm gonna hop off for one second, it's anarchy upstairs, so I'm gonna go attempt to help for two minutes. I'll be right back.
Fair enough. So I guess, um, you know, uh, taking the numbers aside for a second, and just, you know, we can follow up afterwards. To, to get the actual numbers, but if we're talking about the way that. The working group feels it would be successful in terms of communicating the impact of this, right? Do we feel as if the then? Average number of units permitted between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty one is a worthwhile metric that people. For people to, to know, or do you feel like that's kind of too disconnected? Cuz my thought is that you have. We've permitted approximately two hundred a year, call it. If we have, you know, the number of lots that were sold, or, and or the total properties according to our housing data, censuses. We have the existing units in the district and the total possible new housing units, and if you assume a certain percentage of turnover. You could compute uh estimated additional X number of units per year, and then you're comparing that against that baseline of the two hundred. I don't know if people think that's a compelling line of talking, or do, is it just, you're throwing too many numbers at people and people are kind of, kind of have their eyes glazed?
And some people will like it and some who won't, I don't know.
I think there'll be eyes glazed if it's all on one slide. I guess this kind of goes into the, I think we need to have the info available. If they ask the question as opposed to having them read it.
Yeah, if, if someone asks a question like that. Instead of saying, well, you know, will it be doing it back to, at least if you can answer it, at least in part, I think that would help. But putting that out there for someone to ask. You know, to use that to get to something else, I don't think it's helpful, so. I don't know if it really explains it, but having, having the answers for the potential questions that are gonna ask, I think are helpful. Putting that out there for someone to. Just read it and say, well, what does this mean? Let me explain this. I, I've seen that before too, you put anything out there, someone's gonna start asking questions about it. And try to get you to teach them, you know, economics at that point.
And cuz the, the two hundred permits a year is town wide, right?
Correct.
I just, I, I wonder whether you don't, I mean, can we find out what in these five districts is sold in the last five years? And color them differently, like that's visual, right? Oh, well, gosh, only. I mean, cuz then somebody might in their mind say, oh, that's not that many have turned over in the next five years, probably the same amount will turn over, or maybe a little more. Cuz maybe there's a new incentive to sell your house, I don't know, um. Just a thought.
Well, it would be tough for this district because we've specifically excluded the, the ivory units that have come up.
Excluded what? Sorry. Excluded what? Sorry, Matt, my, somebody is.
Those those bigger units were taken those out of the equation for this district, so if that would kind of skew it a little bit.
Yeah.
Add it in. A couple of projects, you know, adjacent to that, then obviously the number of units would go way up.
Okay.
So I guess the the other question is that, does it make sense to take? You know, the average number of units permitted in the town. Total properties, existing units in the district, the possible housing units across the five districts. Get all that information, throw it in appendix down below. And then basically, you don't even get into any of this until people start asking the questions as it relates to. You know, what that looks like from a from a volume perspective, and you're kind of reverting this just to basically just a map. Get rid of all the information, because you're. You know, where you are in the presentation, you're coming right off of. You know, these slides where you're showing the different development context. Uh, the 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 thought was that you have a map showing where all those different elements are, and then you have. The information, you know, the numbers on the side, but if we think the numbers are gonna distract from the core narrative of. You know, the housing that we're talking about is not materially different from the neighborhoods. Then maybe we just take all the information, put it in appendix to Matt's point, and then if we need to pull it up at a later date, we can.
I'm gonna advocate, we keep it simple. And visual, let's have those answers in your pocket.
So, just so how, just so we're clear, the way I would read is, you're going through the multifamily districts. You hit this map where you show, and we're gonna update this map to Julie's point with the additional information on the legend key. But you just show where all those different examples for those photos within the town are taken. And then you're just pivoting right over to the, you know, the positive impacts of the district. And then your implementation schedule, summary, questions.
Yeah, I think that's good. Um, one thing I'm I may add for the positive impacts is that who may. You know, who may benefit from new units. And and I think we need to play out that it's. It's people that are downsizing, who want to stay in town and need a smaller unit, and may not want to live in a big complex and have a high condo. I think that's gonna resonate to a certain amount of people. You know, I wanna stay in town, I don't need a huge house. Why else would I wanna live in a massive building?
It's kind of the aging in place concept.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I'm trying to think, I I think I agree, uh, or I do agree. Um, I'm just trying to think in terms of how do you communicate that besides just saying make downsizing easier? The other language is more elegant than that, or?
I mean, do you need to? I mean, that's. I mean, it's not inelegant, it's not like you're offending anybody there. I think it's straight to the point, people wanna stay in town when they're downsizing. Because it now gives options.
And and it truly gives a an entry level. Option for someone who's trying to, you know, get in the market.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
And frankly, it frees up single families for families, right? No.
But that's really, I mean, that's kind of in a lot of respects, the crux of the. A lot of the other things are important, right? But that's really the the crux of the argument, right, is you're trying to increase the housing option types within Wakefield. As part of the wider housing crisis. I would almost say some of the other things in terms of the. Economic development and the geographic equity are kind of side benefits, but really, if you're talking about like, what's the? The main reason that we're doing this is to, it's to address the housing. Uh, crisis or lack of options for people in town.
Yeah, and if you've all heard that, you know, I wanna stay in Wakefield, I wanna move to Wakefield, I just can't afford anything. This is going to help that. Of course, people are gonna say, well, all these units are gonna be million dollar units. You can then point, you know, go back a few slides and say, but, you know, these are fully started units, they're not. Or downsizing, they're not a massive. Some of the type on in.
Okay. Uh, anything else anyone else wants to go through on this, um, or any other content that people want to circle up on? One, also, thank you all for the feedback, this has been exceptionally helpful, and I think that the presentation's. Far stronger now than it was even coming into the tonight's discussion.
Thanks for all your work on it, you did a lot of work, but you and Aaron, I'm sure.
We're getting close, we're getting close.
This is, uh, this is really nicely, nicely done, thank you.
So, uh, so in that case, um, I do notice that we have some, a a a member of the public on on the line. Uh, I'd like to invite if anyone from the public wants to to comment on this whole back and forth that the working group's been having. Um, open that opportunity to do so.
Hey, Jim, I I think I might be the only one.
Uh, it looks like you might be, but honestly, you'd be the first.
The actual first, really?
Yeah. Well, at least to the working group, not not definitely not to the planning board, I can assure you that.
Right, right, um. Couple of comments I'd have, and you know, just to give you a preview of some of the questions you might get from me on the sixteenth. Um, and being a transparent guy, I'm not gonna just hoodwink you, you know, uh. I think a couple of the things that concern me about this. Are that the term equity is often used. I've heard you say geographical equity, I've heard equity, I saw equity on one of your slides where comparison might be made, well. It's not equitable, or it may be more equitable to spread this out a little bit, or to keep it, you know, away from a certain. Uh, area of town. When, I think whether one has a favorable view of forty eight or an unfavorable view. The equity situation is the same, and and here's what I mean by that. If you think it's a bad thing, then it's more of a shared sacrifice. If you think it's a good thing, then it's the same thing, and the equity is that, you know, we we should be spreading it around. I have had a tough time, and I know when you came before us before, I I had asked. Um, you know, why don't we have, since we have two train stations, why don't we have two areas that? Are either sharing the sacrifice or sharing the good benefits of forty eight? For example, if I'm in Greenwood, and I've always lived in Greenwood, and I wanna stay in Greenwood. Why wouldn't I have the opportunity to have a place in Greenwood? What are some of the others potential benefits of being? You know, a couple of miles closer to Oak Grove? Well, a lot of us are telling, taking the yellow Yankee bus now, we were talking about that at our meeting last night. You know, and it goes, uh, you know, it 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 goes down. Um, Greenwood Street, but it also touches all of the locations heading to Oak Grove. But if you're in Greenwood and you're just taking a bicycle, you can go down to the Melrose Bike Path. And you can go through Melrose and go to Grove a little bit easier than you can perhaps from the area of West Side or Wakefield Station. So, I mean, I kind of feel that passing over having two locations, uh, is 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 potential mistake. Um, seems to me that area could be tightened up around Wakefield Station. I know you had said something about. Uh, at our meeting about, um, um, density, or there was a concern in Greenwood. Then when I looked at the other slide that you had, though, you you were saying, well, one of the opportunities of this other option could be different. Hot types of housing. So if I'm translating that correctly, then that would say to me that maybe there could be. You know, more dense housing or taller structures, I don't know, you you could perhaps fill me in on that, but. You know, I don't know that that necessarily is is not a possibility that should be considered for Greenwood, you know, we have. You know, tall buildings in every part of town, we have tall buildings on every Melrose T stop when I'm on the train. Um, you know, maybe a taller building somewhere in in the Greenwood train station area wouldn't be a bad idea. And I guess one other thing that I throw out there, and it it's really way out there, although to me it's not. Is that we have, you know, seven point three acres of the old school, and we've rented. The Yule School, you know, building proper to the scene collaborative. But, you know, I've mentioned to the town administrator a number of times, gee, well. You know, if that's largely an unused baseball field, what a location it is. I don't know whether it would be possible, um, you know, to consider. And and I I realize this is kind of way out there, but would it be possible to consider those? Six or seven acres or whatever are not really needed by the scene. Um, to be some kind of area where we actually could produce more units. We could produce more units than we're talking about. When we talk about turnover, I don't think that's necessarily the thing to focus on. Because if I own a two family and I wanna take advantage of as of right, I don't have to sell it to anybody. To do that, I don't know how that's gonna cut, I don't know that turning over of real estate is the only way. That somebody's going to take the benefit of forty eight. Um, and and again, I agree with what a lot of what you folks are saying, we don't necessarily. The growth that we've had in other areas doesn't necessarily translate to whatever growth we may prognosticate. As a result of forty eight. Um, but anyway, I I, those are just a few of my thoughts, I'm I'm more in favor of sharing the wealth. Through two train stations, um, or or the shared sacrifice, depending on how one views forty eight. And beyond that, you know, I do wonder whether outside of the box, we might consider, you know, something like the. Um, all that open property, and I know it's open space, but, you know, the the. Largely, I think, unused, in my opinion, unused, I've never driven past it, seen anybody other than walking their dog on it. Um, you know, in in that really nice location down the hill from the old school, if that would be a. Possible way to merge that into a, I mean, that's point two five, I think, from the Greenwood Station, it's also got wonderful access. Uh, to the Melrose Island Station. Um, and there's land, and there'd be room for the thirty percent, there'd be room for a lot of things. Granted, it's currently under the school committee, town council, though, and the town have authority over. Uh, all properties, so I'm sure it wouldn't be a big deal. If people were minimal, you know, on the council to, uh, to using that as part of this. And again, you know, I I just say, let's not overstate the, oh, good, I'm now able to stay in Wakefield. Aspect of this, because market rate units, you know how hard we're working on trying to hit ten percent in forty B. Maybe a project like a project over at, uh, the old school would get us to ten percent, that at least keeps us equal. But all other projects are gonna work, in my opinion, I don't know how else to see it against our forty B number. And we've got people all kinds of angry about the three proposals on the Hunt Street or off the Hunt Street, if if you know Star Cav. Um, anyway, those are just a few of my comments, appreciate you taking them. And and congratulations on the work, you've done a lot of hard work, I'm just giving you a couple of my thoughts.
No, I honestly, all very fair fair comments, um, a- and we prepared this slide as it relates to the Greenwood, just for your. Information, the way the law is written, and I'm not saying the law's perfect by any stretch. We have to take all the lots that currently, you know, as they exist, and use those as the basis of an evaluation. And when we did it for Greenwood, we found that you, if you run it with based on, you know, allowing a four unit as of right. You didn't hit the minimum density that's required. So you'd have to, we think we you probably would need to have six units as of right. And but, you know, potentially look at the, some of the dimensional requirements as it relates to, you know, how tall the building is. In order to make the law work in Greenwood, so any land that we zone for Greenwood would be a purely discretionary add. So all the land that we have to do for this zone has to be associated with. Or has, we we felt as if it didn't make sense to have a section of Greenwood that was higher than we thought we'd wanna have allowable density. And then a Wakefield Junction, that would be basically a hundred percent of our compliance model. We have had conversations about, does it make sense to have? We're z- doing the zoning, does it make sense to do it for Greenwood? And create, you know, a similar zone, even if it had slightly different rules or whatnot. Uh, the the feeling was that because this is tied to state requirements, that we didn't wanna submit. Two separate things, one of them is required by the state and one of them isn't, because we felt that muddied the message.
Yeah, I I don't wanna do more than we have to, I mentioned that at our last meeting, I I just wanna be clear, but. I I my question is, could a district in Greenwood be drawn that it would include those empty acres over by the ball field? That would minimize the amount needed at Wakefield Station?
My understanding is.
It is town owned, yeah, I don't know if we can use town owned, but I'm just, that's why I'm asking.
It gets removed from the model completely.
And and it also, the the entirety of the lot counts for four units. Because it's it's by lot, the lot as it currently cost is existing. So unless we went and subdivided all the lots at the Yule School and then counted each one of those lots, it only counts for four units for the whole thing.
I guess my my fe- feeling generally is, it it doesn't look to me, just as an individual driving through town. That the lots in Greenwood are so large that there'd be a density problem, could you just explain that to me a little better?
Aaron, could I defer this one to you since you were working?
Yeah, so when Azra and I, I'm gonna try to pull up a map of it real quick, so you have a better idea when you're looking at the parcels. So the parcels in, um, Greenwood are significantly larger than what the parcel sizes are that you see in kind of the. Um, downtown Wakefield area, um, I'm trying to pull up my map right now, so when you have the larger parcels, and we were kind of plugging away at that. Try not to have that huge density, like Jim was saying, kind of those four units per. Per parcel, basically, um, it really, you would have to, like he said, go higher up in density. So if you look here, I'm gonna see if I can share my screen, um. Compared to. So Greenwood, okay, um. So you'll see here all the, can you guys see my screen? Do you see my?
Yeah, just it just, it just popped up.
Okay, so you'll see here where I have my, um, mouse. These lots are pretty small compared to kind of these lots where you see the post office, the the church, as well as town hall. But when you're looking kind of this west side, the parcels are a little tighter, as well as this downtown commercial district here, which we call out. Um, here as well, so those are the kind of the districts we're highlighting right now. If you kind of scroll down to Greenwood, you can see in this area here how much larger these parcels are. Compared to the area we were just looking, uh, here's the Yule School that you were just discussing as well. Um, you know, you see a a plot of land here, some of these other ones are much bigger, so we could have, um, had. It would have to be kind of like two different districts, I'm trying to think of the best way to explain this, where the requirements would have to be. Much different and allow for larger density down there to meet the fifteen units per acre. Um, that the state is mandating, so I think that's why we kind of. Stayed away from there, because we do see some of this development already, the larger density, even though that's not the route we're going in kind of this Wakefield Station area. Um, we felt the Greenwood area, we may be able to still maybe down the road with some zoning, um, and looking at that area a little deeper. Think of more creative ways to do some development and, um, in that Greenwood Station that is not tied to the MBTA. Uh, compliance, and so.
So do all of our districts have to be the same? In other words, could there be a Greenwood district? You know, I see some of the larger lots, could there be a Greenwood district that was different in terms of density? In other words. Okay, I see some big lots, commercial, maybe currently commercial or whatever, um, you know, very close to the train tracks. Could it be that those would be different, that that district would be smaller? Um, but also might allow for some of the type of buildings that we do see in other parts of town, you know, six stories over at Gray Lofts. Um, you know, four stories or five stories, Tono, Foundry Street, you know, other things that. You know, Hopkins Street, Tarrant Lane, which is very tall, extremely tall, I was playing golf the other day, and it was looming over me. Just wondering, could, is there anything?
So we we absolutely could. One of the the reasons why we thought that would not be as successful is. And Aaron, do you mind if I grab the screen back for a second? I can, one of the points I wanted to show, uh, the counselor as it relates to the contiguous contiguous nature of the districts. So one of the 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 items that we have to do, Councilor McLean, is that the. I think it's fifty percent of the district has to be continuous. So we actually had to add along North Ave, you can see where my my pointer is. This little one parcel in order to join the western side, you know, that's bounded by Albion and north. With this section that's uh bound by Maine and north. In order that that land area now is big enough that it constitutes. Over fifty percent of the mass that we're going to be submitting to the state. So we could have done something similar with Greenwood. We would just have to play kind of a um. A game with the amount of land that we're putting in the Wakefield. Station versus the Greenwood area. And then my understanding is you can have separate allowable densities. To your point, um, there's also some minimums in terms of the actual size of the district. So those would been, would have been items that we would have could have, would have and could have done. We, when we looked at it as a group, we felt as if based on the amount of land in around Wakefield Junction. That we, if we could comply with Wakefield Junction only, this might be not a good opportunity to highlight that. An additional zoning effort is probably warranted around Greenwood Station. That we could do as a separate zoning effort and wouldn't be restricted by any of the the state requirements. So we could do whatever we thought was in the best interest of the town, instead of trying to be shoehorned into into meeting the state's requirements.
What what is the connecting lot? I mean, did you take something from the the MBTA? I mean, what is, what is the connecting lot there that you used?
So I I spoke to uh folks at the state that are running the three A program. Yeah, it's kind of comical. And when we were, I told them the challenge that we are running into was the train being in between our two districts. And how do we make this contiguous if with the train going through? And so we ended up doing it at Yale where there's currently a residential building anyways, um, with the frontage on Yale Ave and the side is. On North Ave. And they said, you know, you could make the pitch. That since the MBTA line is what's kind of breaking up these two districts, that that we'd be comfortable with that. So. That's what they told me.
Could we do something similar in Greenwood?
So one thing we didn't mention is we were sensitive to properties that are currently commercial and that there's zoning. Support to keeping them being primarily commercial. So in Greenwood, the east side of the street is. Very commercial and so that wasn't, we didn't think we could capture that as part of the the area in order to get enough.
I think one thing we also talked about too was at the end of the day, passability of the proposal, so we could comply with the law and not have the. The 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 grants or whatever go away. And and one of the things that we hear quite a bit, I think, and you probably do too at town council is. Everything is too big, everything is too high, everything is too dense. So if, no matter what we do in Greenwood, it's gonna have to be bigger and higher. Which in our, when we started talking about this, um, I think in the spring or maybe even the winter. Was at the end of the day, passability of what we proposed and adding that additional density, additional height. Was gonna take quite a bit away and make, not not that it's not necessarily a good idea. But if we can do down in Greenwood, what we think is ultimately best for the town outside of, not what we think, what the town thinks. Outside of MBTA communities, after having seen the challenges down there, that I think that's at the end of the day where we where we ended up.
I appreciate that, Greg. I I understand what you're saying entirely. I don't uh don't disagree at all. I'm not a huge forty A fan, but we gotta do what we gotta do. Okay, thank you, guys.
And I think, Mike, we could agree with you too, that. You know, it has to be done, but the way they rolled this out and everything, we're just doing, making do with the best we have here.
Yeah, no, I understand, Aaron. Yep, it's a, the forty B problem just really is what blows my mind because we keep keep inching closer to the goal. And, you know, the condos on Chestnut Street are fine with the market rate. And that's what this is all going to be. I know some people don't think there will be that much building. I tend to be a person that thinks that when you start talking about as of right, there will be building. I don't know how much, but there will be building. Okay, thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much for the for the feedback. Very helpful. So for the for the rest of the working group. Now we're through the PowerPoint presentation, so kind of talking about what are the upcoming deliverables and or meetings. So. Uh, if, and and the first thing I want to ask is. Are people comfortable with us starting the the presenting the PowerPoint? As you know, amended based on the comments we had today, starting that process with the. When we've got another meeting between now and, uh, or sorry, town council, we're gonna be presenting on the sixteenth. So right now. You know, we theoretically could try to meet between now and then. Or if people are comfortable with Aaron and I updating this and then presenting to town council. I wanted to get people's feedback as it relates to, you know, relative levels of comfort based on the conversation we've had today.
I don't see a need to to meet the the edits and nuances of it, I think. Are fine, you know, you, the editor's choice, it's, I think the substance has been kind of discussed and. Like I said before, you know, based on the town council's discussion. You know, we can amend it further. This isn't a one and publish and never touch it again. So. This is meant to be iterative in terms of responsive to people's comment. So I think. You guys moving hand with the sixteenth is a great place to start. We got it. I mean, we gotta get it going.
Yeah, I agree, even if you had presented. What you had showed us before we even even looking at it, I would find that too. I I don't feel any trust, but we do this.
Okay, well, in that case, we'll we'll update it and obviously as we finish the the putting the. Uh, as to to this, we'll make sure that we distribute out to the balance of this group. The other thing I want to make.
I was gonna say, just on the calendar, though, um, based on your PowerPoint and it's, it'll be in my edits. The environmental committee will not be until November. So you had, you know, based on what our schedule is, so we'll be after all the other ones, but November ninth is ours.
Yep, I actually just noticed that as we're going through this as well and wrote that down. So thank you for keeping me honest.
Although you have a good excuse to being a little distracted, Jim, so don't worry.
No worries. Uh, so in that case, so just for everyone's reference, so. Uh, October sixteenth, we'll have the the presentation of town council. The intention is to start the planning board, public forums. Uh, on the meeting thereafter, I believe that is uh October. Twenty something, uh, bear with me for a second, I'll pull it up right now.
I have it in front of me, so it's the twenty fourth November and so you have to do it three times in front of planning or?
We're gonna go to uh the planning board to have public forums and solicit feedback from the public on the October twenty fourth, November fourteenth and December twelfth. Uh, October twenty fifth, we're confirmed for ZBA and then to Aaron Robbins' point, uh, November ninth, we'll go to environmental sustainability. And then, uh, you'll start making the revisions and with the intent to uh solicit the feedback in the, between now and then the year. Make revisions early in twenty twenty four and then be ready for Springtown meeting. Uh, the other thing that I wanted to. Kind of start talking about with the group is. You know, now that we we're pretty much through the presentation, I think we have a pretty good handle of the maps. I think we need to start trying, turning our attention to the actual bylaw. So we had that last meeting, we got a bunch of great feedback. I think the next to do will be, you know, for up, for Aaron and I will coordinate. You know, starting to write that bylaw up a- and then trying to get something ready. And so I think my my thought is that it's likely that. You know, our next meeting would probably want to be either in October or sometime in early November. In order to allow a a first turn of that bylaw text and probably try to transmit to the this group. Of, you know, a couple of days in advance, but I I I don't have a strong sense of what that process wants to look like, so I wanted to solicit feedback. In terms of what other folks felt would be appropriate in terms of how we want to get that together.
I think you shouldn't do it the week the baby is due.
Although I do like that you scheduled that.
I do love that it's on your calendar.
Good day, too.
As as if it was a guarantee, right?
That's so, it's so weird. I uh, I thought that it was only sharing the agenda. I didn't realize my actual screen. I was like trying to double check a couple of the calendar ti- times in terms of the dates being correct.
Sorry, and I called it out, sorry.
Honestly, it's good, because I I Zooms, a lot of times it tries to share the the document, not the screen, so I was trying to make sure that the. The dates are correct, but I'm glad to know that it's actually the screen's live.
I can make any of those kinds of work. I mean, when is town meeting for fall is, I should know this. Oh, it's not till the eighteen, okay, so yeah.
But we planned on to having a table there, right, Jim?
A table at town meeting?
Yeah, with information. I think we print out the map, talk about, maybe have some copies of the presentation there. Just information in general about three A and how it'd probably be at next Springtown meeting. If you need to learn more information. I just want to make sure we cover all our, people know about it. Unless people feel differently, I thought we talked about this.
It sounds good.
No, it's it's fine.
So.
The hallway, not in actual town meeting.
So in that case, does it make sense to try to meet, I'll call it, I don't know. Cause it probably doesn't make sense to, we actually, I don't think we can meet on the seventh, right? Cause that's election day. On election day. Does it? Uh, maybe, maybe we can follow up later and see what people's availability is. I don't know, I'm looking at the next set of Tuesdays and between. Between all the different election days and then the planning board has a conflict. And I know there's a number of other. Members on the call that have other obligations, hence why you're here. Maybe we just send a note to everyone and see if we can coordinate something uh in early November.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Julie, does your category? What's that? I said, is the category? Yeah, the cat is just happy somebody's home.
Um, and I just wanted to let you guys know, I was listening slash doing some work with numbers as well. So. With the three districts, it's seventeen thirty five, and I think that's along the lines of what I said before. And um, that brings us to, I had to do some acreage calculations too, brings us to um. Fifteen point six dwelling units per acre for the three districts. What other information? I think those are the two important ones. So it's the over, that's sixteen ninety six by just a little.
Well, we always wanted to be slightly over in case there's something we have to.
No, I I'm a little normal, I'm a little worried it's a little too close. Because I am going to sign, uh, I talked about this before, uh. I just want to make sure it's not a requirement, but I would like to have a meeting with uh the state um ninety days out. So that brings me to December, January to review our compliance model, the maps we have, because if there's anything that's glaring. You know, glaring out to them that we get it early sooner than later, um, before uh April and May, so. And also the the bylaw as well, but I don't think that's that's important to them.
Speaking of the state, Aaron, there was an article recently. Maybe in the Globe, talking about the number of communities they're behind on making some deadline submissions to the state. So. Where, do you, do we have another check in with them required or we're past that, right? So we're.
We're past that, we're in just kind of interim uh compliance right now until um the our deadline at the end of next year, so. I was talking to a bunch of different towns and some people are kind of. Wondering if uh who's gonna be the one looking at all these plans when they come in. Right now, I've only talked to two people at the state really doing this program, so. We'll see.
Are are you implying that they're not staffed accordingly to the piles of packages that are gonna come in?
I didn't say that, you did, Robin.
Ask those other towns when they're submitting, so we can.
Yeah, I know, that's why.
Do you want to be before them or after them? So are they tired when they look at them? Our town meeting tends to be in the middle of other communities. I mean, if you work backwards from that, so.
Yeah, but I think we're in good shape, um, talking to other folks, so um, I think we're good. It's just. Just want to make sure that nothing kind of pops up last minute and we're scrambling, so. I just wanted to add that.
No, thank you for.
Okay, so I think in terms of the next step, so Aaron and I will take a, take another pass through the development bylaw. We'll update the the presentation and then start that engagement process with everyone and then. We'll send out some some requested availability for a meeting, kind of targeting that November timeframe to try to go through it. The bylaw one last time and move forward from there. Uh, are there any other things from the bylaw perspective anyone else to highlight or have any other further conversations on?
Did we say that we were gonna see Daniel Bendy gonna look at it, or he said he couldn't because of other things, right? That we aren't able to make use of their. Their perspective, right?
So the the bylaw review committee uh does have the ability to review it, uh, and we talked about they were gonna. Take some time in their January and February meeting to take what we come up with as a as an initial template. And add their comments and layer layer on to it. So I think that if we take, I think we're close, I mean. Because we're materially utilizing the template from the state, I think we're relatively close. There's a handful of items that I candidly, I've been concentrating on the presentation, so we need to just circle back as it relates to. Um, some additional feedback, uh, so Aaron and I will start concentrating on that as our kind of next batch of to do's.
And that includes things like amount of opens, like outdoor space and parking and all that, right? The the attributes essentially, okay. I mean, I wonder whether in the slide, we don't need something that lists those things.
That was the intent of that one, that one where we had the the comparison between. Yeah.
Okay, okay. And we still want, we're gonna leave the parking as a discussion point, right?
I think we need to, and Aaron, you can, you can.
I think um, there's some serious concerns and I think one other group I'd put on our radar for us to talk about, to talk to is the Traffic Advisory Committee. Uh, because talking to a couple of people here, they do have serious concerns with the one and a half parking. Uh, space and overflow into streets, what that's gonna look like in some of the downtown area. So I was, you know, it was recommended to me to kind of try some of the, find some of these newer developments that um have this one and a half parking spaces and. See how parking's going for them now. So. Um, yeah, I would recommend that we meet with the TAC, but also um. Bring out to the public and our boards as well, their thoughts on maybe lowering our our parking standards. Which we've talked about in this group as well. And I think there'd be support in the internal to maybe possibly lower.
Lower our standards is in.
Like from one or? Uh, from one point five to one point two five. Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah.
By lowering our.
No, 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 sorry, no, lowering what our requirements are, sorry.
No, no, I think you had, yeah, you had it, but I was miss not thinking. Okay.
And and I think as a reminder, I think this group indicated we generally would be supportive of lowering it. We just thought it would be, make the. Make it less likely to pass essentially because people in town. So if we think that there's a pushback from other groups. Within the town, then I think it's probably a worthy, worthy conversation to facilitate.
Uh, since we do have a. Uh, since we do have a non-committee member here. Mike, do you have any thoughts on parking spots? Are you, uh, Jim, is that okay to ask him?
I think it's fine in this context.
So when you're talking about lowering, um, could you just explain to me, Jim? What the net effect of a one point two five would be?
So essentially, in lieu of, so right now. The way that the, the zoning is being, being written is that you, for a four unit. You would need, uh, six parking spaces. If you went to, down to one, two, five, you would need five. And then if you went down to one, potentially you would only need four brake parking spaces for. If you maxed out each one of these lots. I think, and Aaron, I'll, I'll defer to you because I know you've had some of these conversations. I think the concern from Traffic Advisory. Some of the other groups inter, internal town staff. Is as it relates to the number of new cars that we're gonna be providing parking spaces in this downtown area and impacts potentially on traffic.
I, I think, you know, it's a tough one because I think Julie and I both agree. That, you know, we have too many cars on the street to begin with. So my question is, you know, this is the same question they're having down at Stark Ave on the forty B. If you say you're gonna have townhouses with two parking spaces, where do, where do the guests go? They go out on the street, right? Back in fifteen, there was a very spirited town meeting where, I'm sorry, town council meeting where. Dick Stinson and Betsy Sharon were arguing, you know, not to put cars back on the street. And town administrator and, uh, former Smith chief were arguing. Well, we can take care of it. We can do snow removal, we can do, you know. Phone blasts and tell people to get off during a sm- snow emergency. I mean, I see a lot of cars on the street. I'm not picking on any one property, but when I walk to the train station, a market rate unit. You know, with three units with six cars, I don't necessarily see those guys walking down to the train station, so. You know, is, is lowering that requirement? Really gonna lower people's desire to have motor vehicles in the good old US of A? I don't know what the answer to that is. I think it's a very difficult. Thing to say, we're somehow going to. And I wish we had actual studies where, you know, people who were living close to the train station. Used bikes and walked everywhere and didn't really need a vehicle. But that's not, you know, most of us. And that's not most of the people. I mean, I don't drive a lot. You know, we're, we're not the problem. My wife and I up here on the hill. But, you know, a lot of people, our, our, our roads are worse than they've ever been. I, I have general problems with density because I don't think that necessarily. Stops people from having cars. And if we don't have an overnight parking ban during half of the year like we used to have. We have cars all over the street, even on our street, Aaron. I don't go down the hill sometimes. I have actually changed my own driving patterns on my own street. Because there are too many cars clogging up the road. So I, I don't know what to tell you. I don't really have much good input on this. I don't think. Tweaking something from one point five to one point two five is gonna change anybody's behavior.
Okay, uh, I think that's good feedback. Um, so Aaron, I don't know what, what you view as the next step for the, the meeting with Traffic Advisory. Does it make sense for?
I think it would make sense for you and I to talk first.
Okay.
And talk to internal folks here before going to in front of that board.
Okay. Yeah, then let's put that as a to do for us to pick up. Uh, any other new business anyone else has? I think I, I have every, everything through the, through the agenda that is currently contemplated. In that case, uh. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Okay, in that case, uh, roll call vote, uh, Julie Smith-Gallin.
Yes.
Greg McIntosh.
Yes.
Matt Lowry.
Yes.
Robin Greenberg.
Yes.
Aaron Kokinda.
Yeah.
And myself is a yes. Thank you everyone for the time and, uh, we'll be in touch.